Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwos.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose, and individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. A very quick hello, and I'm about to say goodbye because, just for a moment though. The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. Whereas the length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for the aforementioned subjects. And be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or government interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Who would like to move by Mr. Winston?
Second.
Second by everyone. We'll go with Mrs. Becker. Any discussion? All in favor? Closed? Okay, motion carries. We will be back in about an hour. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're going to move on with our agenda for the evening, and we're going to start with Dr. Valeski in the Superintendent's Report.
If you don't mind, I'm going to go to the podium tonight.
No, you don't.
Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Hammer Shold Upper Elementary School. The art teachers of these talented students are Lisa Gombas and Catherine Barrett. Dr. Gaskell is the principal. I'm proud to announce that we have eight students that are National Merit Scholarship finalists.
Timing.
And one of them just walked in.
Timing.
Your timing, Megan, is impeccable.
What an answer.
So, Megan, I'll let you get settled, but would you mind talking about the process for the National Merit Scholarship?
Oh, yeah, so, huh? Putting you on the spot. So, for National Merit, it was from the PSAT. So, we took that in junior year. Everybody did different amounts of preparation for it. Some people just went in blind. And a lot of it was like SAT preparation. So, we took that, and then about like, I'd say like several months later, you get your score back, and then the way they select whether you can be a National Merit semifinalist is like, every state has its own index. So, New Jersey has probably one of the highest indexes in the country because, you know, our students are just score very highly. So, our index is very high, and you have to meet that index in order to be considered for National Merit Scholarship. So, then after that, you have to complete this application, which basically put you into the running for becoming a finalist. So, we were named semifinalists, I don't know how long ago, I'm not sure, but just like sometime this week, we met up with our counselors and administrators, and they told us that we were finalists. So, after this round, if we make it, we'll be able to probably get some scholarship money for college, which is great.
Congratulations. On Thursday, February 2nd, eighth grade students in Deborah Kelly's Civics, Literacy, and Early American History Honors Course participated in the Middlesex County Court's courtroom-to-classroom program. Students participated in the Jury of Your Peers module, where they learned the distinction between a bench and jury trial, why and how a person is called for jury service, how a person is selected to serve on a jury, and a judge's role in ensuring a fair jury trial. The session culminated with an interactive trial of Harry Potter, where students played the roles of defense attorneys, prosecutors, witnesses, and members of the jury. The trial was overseen by Judge Desai, and students were able to ask for assistance from members of the judge's staff prior to objecting or suggesting another motion before the court. Unfortunately for Mr. Potter, students found him guilty. On Monday, February 13th, schools throughout the district celebrated 100th Day of School. I enjoyed visiting Irwin Elementary School, where they premiered their first annual Hundreds Museum. Students and their families were invited to create projects, and each of the number 100 was displayed in as many ways as possible using simple, everyday terms, and I was immediately drawn to "I survived 100 days of school." On Tuesday, February 14th, seven East Brunswick High School students visited Churchill Junior High School for the "I'm More Than Just That" assembly. The program started approximately 10 years ago at Hammer Shold, based on feedback from students who felt most isolated during their middle school years. The high school students shared personal stories of challenges or struggles that they have overcome. The goal of the presentation is to bring awareness to how words and actions can impact others, and it reinforces for students how to be upstanders and support their peers and classmates. In sports, boys' track are the Group Four Central Jersey sectional champions. This is the second year in a row that the boys' track has won. At the St. John Vianney cheer competition, varsity and JV placed first. Varsity recorded their highest score of the season. In girls' track, Chloe Smith won the sectional in the 400 meter with a school record of 58.43 seconds. And congratulations to Tamile for receiving All-Red Division and All-GMC First Team in girls' basketball. So, congratulations to all of them. Congratulations to our January High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and for modeling exceptional character. And you'll see Megan's name up there again.
I know this would be...
And you swam today, right? This afternoon?
Yeah, we had our sectional finals today.
And how'd you do?
But we all swam very well. We lost the weight of yourself.
All right, good. The East Brunswick High School Orchestra accepted an invitation to perform at Carnegie Hall by Distinguished Concerts International New York. After seeing our winter high school concert performance, the co-founder and artistic director of DCINY was impressed by the size and impact of the string program and offered this opportunity. The concert will take place at 7:00 PM on Saturday, March 18th. Tickets can be purchased at carnegiehall.org. I would like to take a moment to share some of the extraordinary things the district is doing to help our community. On Friday, February 3rd, a district-wide denim day fundraiser was held to benefit the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women campaign. A total of $2,739 was collected to help raise awareness about cardiovascular disease. On Friday, February 10th, the administration building hosted a denim day to help displaced families in our district. A total of $275 was raised. The bottom picture is the group from here, from central office. This is actually in this room. We use the Super Bowl as an incentive for people to dress in their apparel, but I have to report the finance department did cheat to win the competition. And, but we have to wait an entire year or file a legal challenge. Thank you, thank you to our high school National Arts Society for hosting another very successful blood drive on Tuesday, February 14th, and it's always wonderful to witness so many of our students and staff helping with this great cause. Over eighty staff members and students donated, and that yielded over 60 pints of much-needed blood. Just a reminder, schools and administrative offices will be closed this Monday, February 20th, in observance of Presidents' Day. Now, I would like to update the community on the district's facilities, vision, and associated initiatives. East Brunswick Public Schools' excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts continues to be among the primary attractions for new residents with school-aged children. In addition to 21st century preparedness, our students and families can access a multitude of services and supports delivered by a caring community of professionals at each of our schools. East Brunswick is more than a blue-ribbon school district. We are a family, and families are making their moves to East Brunswick Public Schools and bringing their school-aged children with them. We continue to attract high-quality candidates from other school districts whose desire is to join our dedicated EB staff. Thanks to a progressive and visionary Board of Education, EBPS has positioned itself as a proactive educational leader. Well in advance of the enrollment growth forecasted by the district's demographic study in 2019 and the subsequent update being delivered tonight, we presented and orchestrated some of the most complex, yet necessary, changes in the history of our district. Change is inherently hard, but the rewards for our students are worth the efforts we continue to undertake. By changing each elementary school's grade level configuration to K4, we freed up additional space for students, and this elementary age group is currently dominating our newly-registered students. A majority of our over 1,600 special education students benefit from least restrictive environment programming in our elementary schools with their grade-level peers. We will continue to monitor enrollment impact on our schools, as well as student distribution among all eight community-based elementary schools. By making the former Hammer Shold Middle School a 5-6 upper elementary school, we were able to make strides directed at minimizing transitions and provide better school experiences for students during these two important years. Adding temporary classroom units, also known as TCU's, which are now known as the seventh grade wing at Churchill Junior High School, makes that a 7, 8, 9 facility, and that was our biggest endeavor among all these moves. Among our goals were two major priorities. First, the shorter term, was to clear up the misconceptions about what a TCU was like. They have been proven to be comfortable teaching and learning spaces that by their own design will have a limited life. As staff and students have already attested, each classroom is comfortable, climate-controlled, durable, fully equipped with our district technology, newly furnished, and secure. As I mentioned, the clock started ticking the moment we took occupancy. We have five years to house our seventh graders in permanent space. Second, as we look forward to next school year, we strive to exceed our community's expectations at every progressive step of this Board's facility vision. In addition to making sure our students have a positive seventh-grade experience, this grade level restructuring provided the necessary staging for what will again be our most significant accomplishment. The East Brunswick Board of Education has prudently authorized the exploration of a new high school concept with associated community use features. Our high school has been renovated and modified over its lifespan, but like any aging facility, the tangible and intangible cost of continuing to maintain it must be carefully weighed against replacing it. All of these moves allow us to investigate, envision, solicit feedback, plan, design, and potentially marshal support for a new comprehensive state-of-the-art grades 9 through 12 high school. Let me be very clear, a new high school is not a foregone conclusion. It is an option the Board is considering. I acknowledge the significant time Mayor Cohen dedicated in his State of the Township address to our investigation of a new high school. I want to also be clear that communication with a variety of stakeholder groups is paramount. We will continue to execute the same transparency with the township and EB school community as we did with the pandemic and subsequent recovery phases. Our envisioning begins with the work of a board-appointed ad hoc committee, which met for the first time on January 31st, 2023. Members include township officials, business leaders, those with children in schools, those who do not have children in schools, and members of our senior community. The work of this group is an important first step that was designed to begin the multiple outreaches to the communication or with communication to the entire community of East Brunswick. And as you can see here, this is the progressive stage as we plan to roll this out over a long period of time, the next year. Just as Mayor Cohen requested representation for the township, I want to represent the school district and have critical central office administration as part of the planning dialogue, and of course, that includes the Board of Education. Our township residents absolutely need to know the cost, value, feasibility, and durability of a variety of construction options and their associated costs. Our Board of Education administration remain committed to that transparency as we always have. Furthermore, those construction cost analyses should be augmented by amortized operational costs of the proposed finished facility. And additionally, the value of Mayor Cohen's conditional offer of pilot funding to offset the high school construction needs to be quantified so that we can communicate that in our outreach effort to the community. With any prudent analysis, the quantitative costs I have just described need to be weighed against the qualitative values associated with a variety of options the Board is exploring. Any new facility needs to be designed to meet the needs of the EB community for 50 years. Moving ninth grade to the high school is our objective. Regardless of the solution, once that objective is met, temporary classrooms will be removed from Churchill, making it a grade 7, 8 middle school without further modification. Without a doubt, there is a tremendous amount of work ahead, but with our collective opportunity before us to bring a high school vision, we can frame it in providing optimized spaces for current and future educational, athletic, and artistic experiences. Intelligent organization of classrooms and supporting spaces. Integration of building infrastructure elements that also supports future building plans. Incorporating acoustical features that enhance the teaching, learning, performing environments, creating environments that stimulate the senses and are comfortable for the occupants. And finally, deploying our established and proven security measures in the building, around the building envelope, and extending throughout the campus. Additionally, any proposed community use structure must be evaluated with the same rigor we apply to all our other facilities. We continue to exercise due diligence as we evaluate multiple approaches to this high school vision and represent the current, that represent the current and forecasted needs of the entire EB community. If a new high school becomes the desired approach, its classrooms, athletic stadiums, and a new performing arts community use features will be designed and constructed to prepare generations of students and serve the entire community as the intellectual, athletic, and cultural hub of East Brunswick. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. But I must say, you are being too kind, and maybe you're more of a diplomat than I am because when you referenced Mayor Cohen's address the other night, and I'm speaking for myself, and I'm gonna, we're gonna have a good of the cause for the Board, and I'm gonna guess that a lot of people have some input later on for us, but I have to say that was a very impressive report. But it didn't do justice to the fact that I felt that Mayor Cohen did not ask to work with this Board. Mayor Cohen threw out some accusations about transparency. He threw out some factually incorrect things about the planning process. He was the first to tell the people about a potential referendum, and as you said, we are in a planning process, the ad hoc committee is to do just that. We have engaged not only all the different stakeholders from different areas of the township, but we've got multiple people from his office. We've got council representation, we have Parkson Rep., we have someone from his office. We have reached out to the township on so many different areas and times, and I'm sorry, I'm very frustrated by this, and I feel as though that was, you know, a declaration of some type of war. We have done nothing on this Board but try to work with the township. We have always been there, we have always included the township. When Mayor Cohen wanted to do his town hall meetings in our schools, we allowed it. We were never given heads up, we were never invited. Generally, I feel like we're the ones that are not invited to the table, and I apologize if I'm speaking and it doesn't, you know, if I'm speaking on behalf of people and you don't appreciate what I'm saying, and as I said, I will give you your time, but I truly feel that the mayor was out of line in his comments. And quite honestly, and I don't know if the people out there, most of you probably do realize this, this is an unpaid Board. These are people that dedicate time with no, nothing but just the goodness that you are doing something for this community because most of us, and I can say that, went to this high school. Almost all of us have had kids that are either in the high school, will be in the high school, or were in the high school. We are second and third-generation East Brunswick students and alumni, and the reason that we are up here is because we want to make sure that our children and grandchildren have the same that we had and better. And when we look at the opportunities to make things better in this township, we'd like to work with the town, we'd like to work with the mayor. I don't want to be held hostage and be told that the only way the mayor is going to work with us, that he's going to hold back funds, critical funds, pilot funds potentially, least... Sorry, I thought, I lost my word, I apologize.
Yeah, pilot funding.
But that the pilot funding, but not only that, he's putting us in a position, if he doesn't like what we're doing, he's saying that he's going to take it out on the taxpayer. That's essentially how I saw that. And as much as I love the idea of a community center, I don't feel that on our school grounds is necessarily the place, because the other thing I will tell you is, our facilities are currently being used by the community. We are opening our doors all the time, whether it be to his town halls, or it be to local athletics, or groups, or PTAs, our doors are open. We are a community hub for people, and we're trying to make an even better one, and there will always be a community portion of that. So, I just, I have to say, Mayor Cohen, you know, you are on this Board, you know what it's like to be a Board member, you know the dedication that the people up here to say or to imply in any way, shape, or form that anybody up here is not being transparent because you think we're hiding something or have ulterior motives. Again, unpaid Board, we put a lot of hours in. I don't think you realize, and some of you have been here with us, we have long meetings, and I'm making it longer right now, and I apologize, but honestly, we have committee meetings, we are out in the community, we are members of the community because as I said, and thank God they're all old in me, a lot of us graduated from the high school. And I just, so I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm probably a little out of order on this, but I, you know, and as I said, hopefully we'll hear from some other Board members, the good of the cause, but I just, I couldn't let it go. You were very diplomatic, but I just felt that something needed to be said because I just felt it was not appropriate, what the mayor did and said.
It should be standing.
Thank you. Well, you shouldn't, it shouldn't have had to be said. That's the shame of it. We should be all working together for the benefit of this town, so, aren't you glad? He's like, now I'm gonna look good. So, as everyone can see by the agenda, and we are going to have our update, the demographic study that we've all been waiting for patiently. So, I apologize for my little interjection, but please...
No apologies. All right, good evening, everybody. Some of you may remember that we were here just about four months ago, I think it was. Okay, so, tonight's presentation is very brief. The other one was very long to give a very big summary of that report. Tonight is really just going to be highlighting what has changed since I was here four months ago. There we go. So, yes, this is a update to the presentation that was done back in October, and the real issue, just to refresh everyone's memory for those people who were not here in the public back then, of the developments that are proposed in East Brunswick, some of the bedroom distributions were unavailable when I approached the township. However, with the help of Mr. Giuliani and the township administrator, we were able to get those bedroom distributions, and they are now included in this report. So, the enrollment projections do reflect the, those new bedroom distributions, and we also revised some student yields from these developments. So, the last thing that we did was we projected the enrollments by this new grade configuration that Dr. Valeski had just talked about, just about 10 minutes ago. When we had done the initial study, that had not occurred yet, so we did it according to the old grade configuration, but the, the report now reflects the new configuration. So, this is a table from the report. I don't expect you to see it very clearly up there because there's so many different developments that are proposed in the township, but the ones that you really want to take a look at are the ones that in the third column there, where it says bedroom distribution, they are in red. So, those are the developments that we did not have information on back in the previous report. So, we were able to get information on Hidden Oaks based upon their market rate and their affordable bedroom distribution, the Tyces, there's Tyces development, and there's going to be another one on the next slide, which is the redevelopment project. So, literally the day before I presented, the, a resolution was passed in the township approving one of the redevelopment projects called Vermella Phase 1. So, that one in red up there was another one that we did not have bedroom distributions for. There's one left where we still do not have bedroom distributions for, and that's Vermella, Vermella Phase 2. And that is, we've been told it's going to be a mix of one and two bedrooms, but until a site plan application is actually provided to the planning Board, we're not going to know what that is. The big difference between this report and the previous one is that I was able to include the redevelopment projects into the enrollment projections. The prior report did not look at any of those 800 units in the estimation of new children coming from those developments because we didn't have enough information. So, the number of children that we're expecting jumped significantly from the prior report. So, the other thing is, the number of housing units that are proposed in East Brunswick, and this is comprehensive now, it's the whole, the whole kit and caboodle, is over 1,700 new housing units. And the majority of them are multifamily units. We call multifamily things such as apartments or townhouses. So, in this particular study, we're projecting 478 public school children, that's up from 284 in the prior report. So, what has changed from this report and the prior is really just those big three developments that I showed you highlighted in red. So, full disclosure, how do we calculate how many kids we're gonna get from those units? So, the three developments that we're talking about are all apartment units. They both have a market rate component and an affordable component. So, one of the things we did in the prior analysis, the prior study, was to compute student yields by housing type, apartments, townhouses, detached, single-family homes. You don't have enough affordable housing units in this township, a good enough sample size, for us to actually use any information from the township to determine what the number of students will be in the future. So, for the affordable component, we use what's called the Rutgers University Center for Urban Policy Research multipliers. So, for a one-bedroom unit, it's .088 children. For a two-bedroom unit, it's .408 children, and for a three-bedroom unit, it's 1.087 children. So, again, that's just for the affordable component, those were the yields for the bedroom distributions, just to be perfectly transparent and clear. The market rate is different. The market rate, I used your current housing stock. On page 68 in the report, there are six major developments that are apartment complexes in East Brunswick. I'm just gonna rattle them off. 85 Main Street, Cranberry Crossing, Kensington Place, Royal Gardens, Taylor Gardens, and Winmore Apartments. Now, the range of the student yield, or number of children per housing unit for those six developments, ranges between... a look at them, are some mix of one and two-bedroom apartment complexes, which is exactly the type of market rate distribution that's coming online. So, when we computed the number of children from those three big developments, I used the average of .242, which is on the bottom of that sheet on page 68. Just to be clear, how well those numbers were derived. So, once we compute those 478 children, now the idea is, we have to join them into the baseline projections in the attendance areas that those developments are going to be, the elementary attendance areas, and modify them to account for those additional children. So, the enrollment projections in this report were, again, from the '22-'23 school year through '26-'27, a five-year period. Just like the prior report, two sets of projections, a baseline projection, which assumes that none of these housing developments get built, which of course is not going to happen. And the last one is adjusted for housing growth, assuming all that 1,700-plus housing units get built and constructed in the next five years. So, the baseline projection for the pre-K to 12 population is identical from when I was here in October, because the baseline is the baseline. This has nothing to do with changing the baseline numbers. So, if you look at that, 8,800, 8,080 students is just a 22-student difference from where you are in the '21-'22 school year. So, if you didn't have any of these housing developments, probably looking at stable enrollment. But once we modify the projections for the new children, you're talking about 8,400 children roughly in the '26-'27 school year. That's a 341-student gain from where you are in the '21-'22 school year, and it's about 173 children higher than the prior study. Why? Because I'm now taking into account those two redevelopment projects. I couldn't get my hands on enough information to really put enough of that into the report. So, the long story, long story of this whole thing is that you have a lot more development incorporated into this study than you did the first go around because of these new bedroom distributions. So, that's the projections. Again, you're not gonna be able to see that unless you're probably right on the front row, but the elementary pre-K to four population is actually projected to increase throughout the projection period. Look at the adjusted, I wouldn't look at the baseline, because again, these things are going to happen, they're approved. So, the adjusted projections there is going to be growth in the elementary and the high school, since we just talked about high school. And the five-to-six grade configuration, fairly stable, and the seven-to-nine grade configuration, some enrollment gain, but nothing compared to the pre-K to four population. So, as a summary, as I just mentioned, the enrollments would likely be fairly stable if not for these impending developments, but just to bring it all into crystal clear of what's going on here, you have a couple things going on that are causing this enrollment growth. We talked about you have had enrollment decline historically, but you have an increasing birth rate, which means that you're gonna have increase in the kindergarten population five years later, which that means you're going to have, as those kids phase through the elementary population, a growing elementary population, and after I retire, you're gonna have those kids go into the middle and the high school population way up the line. So, follow that bouncing ball, and you can see that there is growth because of that. The second reason that you're projecting growth is this inward migration. In the prior report, we talked about how the number of children from one grade to the next is increasing. So, just a simple example, if you have 300 first graders, you're not getting 300 second graders the next year, you're getting 310. You have inward migration of people coming into the school district, and that comes over time. So, imagine those 300 first graders you start out with, what do you think they wind up when they become in year 12th grade? 370, 360? You know, with a district like yours, that's not impossible, because that, there's 11 of the 13 average survival ratios from the birth to kindergarten, all the way up to 11 to 12 are above one. And Dr. Valeski, you hit the nail on the head, you know, when, we have eight merit scholarship finalists, it's like mine belong to me, but excellent districts attract people, and it's always that way. I work with a lot of districts around the state, I try not to name them in my public presentations, but some of them have average survival ratios that are all above one from one grade to the next. Some have birth to kindergarten ratios that are over two, which means if they have 100 births in the township, they wind up with 200 kindergarten kids five years later. Where do you see that? The best districts in the state. It's just so obvious. So, the third reason, and it's the elephant in the room here, is those 1,700-plus new housing units. Okay, that is definitely the third reason why you have this increasing enrollment on the horizon. So, with that, back to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Griff. I see you have questions. Okay, Mr. Sizmore.
Thank you for that great presentation, last time and this time. I'll start off with, I'm not a demographer, but I've been in East Brunswick my whole life. Your numbers are good. I'm gonna go a little bit different and follow with me, and you could tell me I'm out of base, but this is what I base it on. The current apartment complexes, being here, being a couple of years, 26 years, again, you have to use them, I'm not judging you on your professional level, but those apartments, the people that are in there, having gone to calls over 26 years, there's a lot more older residents and stuff, and it kind of gives evidence to, if we build 1,700 new apartments, that's not going to be the same .242 statistic of children in there, also supported by your evidence of the inward migration is families with children. So, I know you have to use those numbers, the numbers I'm gonna throw out, and again, I'm not a professional, but a little bit different. We have over 16,000 households in the township, and I was surprised, I was talking to Mr. Winston, we were surprised at this number. There's 10,000 households without children. So, out of 6,324 households, we produce 8,037 children basically currently in the school system. So, the number just coming from the 6,324 is a yield of 1.27 children per household. That's what we currently have, and I know there's houses, and I know there's apartments, and I know there's other such. But even if you took that 16,000 number and divided it by the 8,000, it's about a .48, .5 child per thing. So, when I see this development coming in, you know, I'll talk about the mayor for a minute because it's relative. He's the number of capacity for a district at 9532, and I know he pulled that out of your report, and he was trying to say, you were saying there will be no impact on, or the report will be no impact on capacity. I see it differently. When you use this, it says the facility efficiency standard methodology. Does that take into account capacity for a school system, like when there's special needs classrooms, and we don't have 25 to 30 kids in, or if there's, you know, other factors that are involved in that? Like, where does that 9532 come from?
So, the 9532, that comes from your, there's two different values. There's district capacity, district practices capacity, and the other one's called FES, recommended capacity. So, here's how it works, and again, I'm not the architect, but this is their area, but I know enough where I think I can talk about it. Different classrooms will have different generating spaces. So, a general ed classroom, just gonna come up with something. For your district, you may have a board policy that all elementary kids, no more than 20 kids in a classroom, just gonna come up with that. So, if that's the case, you can multiply the number of gen ed classrooms times that board value, that will give you the district practices capacity, okay? The FES recommended capacity, FES capacity is based upon, from the state statutes, what the FES recommended number of children per class is. I don't know what that number is, but that's from the state level. So, you got the state, and then you got the district usage that's generating capacities. Then, you have different room usages, small group instruction, special education, gifted and talented. They have different use for capacity, different capacity values in gen ed, they're usually a lot smaller. So, once you start looking at how it's being used, this is how it determines capacity. So, if you had an architect come in here and say, well, you know, you're using a lot more rooms in your building for special, small group instruction than 10 years ago, guess what? Your capacity's gone down, and you haven't done anything to the building. So, building usage has a lot to do with that. There's also non-generating capacity spaces, such as a cafeteria, maybe a gymnasium, they don't count toward capacity. So, that's just a little, very simplistic way of explaining.
I think I'm 100% in agreement with you, because when you look at the number 9532, that doesn't even look at what we use classrooms for. We have a 20% special education population, as we've learned, 1,600 students, to, for someone to, not you, for someone to take that number and just say, well, there's only 8,037 kids now, we've got room for 9,500. They haven't been in our buildings, they haven't looked in our buildings, they haven't looked at the quality of the education, and yes, we, I am sure, do not push it to the state standards, whether it's 25 or 30 in a classroom. Our residents have asked, and we've kept it 18, 22, in that range, because the quality of education goes up with the less amount of children in the classroom, more attention per child. So, when that number was used, it was not, not you saying that, but that number was used for something that I think is, is not applicable. And I only got one more thing, so I don't want to take everybody's time. You know, we were talking about capacity issues, capacity issues by this person. Four developments, 1,600 students are all going into Lawrence Brook Development, that was on the report there. 1,600 units just going into Lawrence Brook. We look at Lawrence Brook now, K to four, pretty full, right? So, for someone to make a statement, not you, sir, that this, this by 1,600 units, that's just in the redevelopment zone from Harts Lane, Wonder Bread, The Gap, and Lowman's. And again, I remember the Wonder Bread factory, there were no students that came out of the Wonder Bread factory, I can guarantee you that. There were no students living at The Gap, Lowman's, or any of the other things on here. So, 1,600 units, I guess is a statement, into the Lawrence Brook District, that affects our capacity. That is a heavy impact onto the Board of Education side of what's going on, and I'm sure this board and the administration is qualified to keep a quality education here in East Brunswick. But I really liked your report, and like I said, I, the numbers, my number came to somewhere around 750, and I think your number might go up from 478 to that once we get Vermella, too. So, I think you and I are close, potentially.
Well, do you mind if I comment on your rationale?
Of course you can, of course you can. I told you, I'm a weekend demographer here, I'm not a problem.
Well, first of all, first of all, I really appreciate that you did that, because most people are asleep by now when I start talking, so, no, really, honestly. It is, so, there's a couple things that when you're looking at the overall average household, it was .48, so you're looking at everything, right? You're looking at all households. So, what we're trying, we can't do that because then we're starting to take in detached single-family homes, which, if you go to the report, that's where the lion's share of all your kids are, even if you don't have a lot of people with kids that are being educated, as you mentioned, there's a lot of homes that don't have any children in them, in those single-family homes. But we have to look at the type of the house, because your numbers are getting inflated by those detached, single-family homes. The other key point that I want to mention, I didn't mention, I wanted to, same page, page 68 in the report, three years ago, we did a similar study for your school district, and there's a column on the far right that shows what the student yield for each of those six apartment complexes were in the 2018-19 school year. And if you notice, throw out 85 Main Street, because it didn't exist back then, but every single one of them, except for Kensington Place, went down. And that is a phenomenon that is not unique to East Brunswick. I just did a paper a couple years ago with some colleagues of mine, actually, we did it actually in New Brunswick, and it was talking about student yields from 1970 to the present. I didn't present this piece, but my colleague did, and I remember, that's why I want to share it with you. Student yields are going down over time, significantly going down over time. If you look at what the apartments used to yield back in 1970 or 1980 to the present, it's a big difference. And this is just, again, showing, and what I think is going to continue to happen, is that student yields are not going to go up in these developments. If anything, they might even go down a little bit. So, if anything, I could be on the higher side if these yields continued to decline. I'm just throwing that out there, too.
Yeah, and I just, like I said, using evidence from what I see in the current apartment complexes, and again, I like your numbers, but I put it together with, like I said, the inward migration is with children. These are all going to be brand-new apartments, they're bringing children. So, I thought you did an excellent job with your numbers. I actually like numbers, so maybe I'm, you know, crazy on that matter, but I loved your presentation, and I guess my final statement is, the redevelopment is going to be a huge impact upon the township for the Board of Education side and students, but thank you for your numbers.
One last thing, because you got me on a roll here. You keep bringing up things that I want to just mention. Again, food for the thought, food for thought for the board. If you look at that same page, what are the two most recent developments? 85 Main, Kensington Place. What do you notice about their yields? They're the lowest of the bunch. Is that indicative of what could happen in the future? I don't know, but I think it's a good possibility.
I would, honestly, I would just say it's indicative of location. 85 Main Street down there is by the old Anheuser Bush, you know, I'm not saying it's the, but it's, you know, it's out there. The other Kensington, I think it was at three-quarter capacity, maybe it's at more now, but it's stuck between the Edge Borough and Walmart. So, I just think, knowing the township, something like where the old Wonder Bread factory was, where it's gonna have an ice rink attached to it, and probably some room for expansion, that's gonna attract, to me, more of a thing with kids, just knowing the township.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not based on numbers, but, but thank you.
Well, the other, the other thought there is, if you look at those two developments, what else do you notice about their rents? They're the highest of the bunch. Okay, so how affordable?
Do we have rent date on the new ones?
There's some affordables, but even with the market rate, I mean, so, one of these, 85 Main does have affordability, there's a mix of them in there. So, again, the market rate portion, for what I think, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be renting these for garden apartment prices, I don't think. I think they're gonna be quite high, and with that, I think that's just gonna make the affordability go down. Families with children, I know they want to live here, but there comes a point where the rubber meets the road, can I afford to rent that apartment? I'm just, I'm just telling.
Yeah, when I'm close, 478 and 750, I think we're pretty close. I just think I'm gonna be slightly higher.
We shall see.
The over-under on it, but thank you very much for your presentation.
So, Dr. Valeski, I think you had something, did you want to?
I just wanted to reinforce what Mr. Sizmore said, our capacity is not the FES standard, and it continues to decline based on programming that we currently have at our system. And as we introduce more special education programming, less number of students, more adults in a classroom, the square footage of that classroom gets consumed by fewer students, and that, that will translate into our capacity, and using that capacity much more quickly.
Great point.
I know Mark and then Jeff have both had their hands up.
So, thank you for the presentation, a little more clear, Mr. Sizmore, excellent, because you kind of spoke what I was gonna say, so I'll just.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's great, because we do live here, we see everything, but certain schools do be overcrowded, so that's a big problem. And also, will we need to be districted? That's another issue that I, you know, will we need to move things around? And, you know, when I eat a lot, which I do, I'm full. And when you get full, what do you feel? You feel bad, right? So, going to capacity isn't the best thing for us, right? You wanna, like you said, have enough kids in the school where we don't overfill ourselves and feel sick. So, you know, to, whoever says that we're in capacity, it's okay. I totally disagree, because when I eat a lot, I don't feel well, so, that's an analogy that makes sense.
I love it, that's great.
Yeah, you don't want to be there, because it's not a place where we should be for the, you know, children, things like that, so.
That's a great analogy. Jeff, follow that.
Well, I'm not gonna talk about food, but I appreciate it, Mark, thank you. A lot of what Mr. Sizmore said was actually born from a two-pizza meeting that we had last night, or, so I guess we are talking about food now, aren't we? And it was. To his point, and I understand yours, I think, you know, living here and being a resident here for as long as I have, I think you do have to remove Winmore Apartments from the equation. It does fill up, it is full of many of our seniors who walk over to the senior center for utilization, which is right in that complex, and that all, that long ago was a hotspot for kids to live, but that is not the case anymore. But, all things being equal, I did extrapolate that number, and it really didn't skew it that much. I come to 31.6. I'm happy, you know, I did take a crash course on the demographic multiplier, which I'm sure you're familiar with, and read a couple of great papers out of Rutgers on that, so it really is, I'm ready to work for you. Now.
I'm hired, just so you know.
And one thing I will say, and as much of the nonsense that the mayor espoused to the other night, he did. that, so it really is, I'm ready to work for you. Now.
I'm hired, just so you know.
And one thing I will say, and as much of the nonsense that the mayor espoused to the other night, he did say something which I 100% agree with, is that people move to East Brunswick for the schools, and that is how he teed it up. I do not believe people are going to move here for Coenville, I think they're going to move here actually for the schools. So, with this new construction, one thing East Brunswick has not really had quite a bit of, is new construction with the type of residents that exist right now. So I do think there's a lot of uncharted territory, and I'm not really quite sure how the public's going to react to it. I do know that we're centrally located, I do know that we are a good hub to the city, and I do know, because I work with these people, that we have the best damn school system in the state. So, so with that said, I appreciate your presentation very much, and I do believe it's something we're going to need to revisit in about 18 months, just to see how much of what you played is right. But I, I think you're close, I think the number really is going to end up somewhere between where Mr. Sizmore came and where you came. I think people are going to come here for the schools, and I think we, being blindsided by this over, overdevelopment and the redevelopment, now we need to respond by making sure that we, too, at the capacity on the lower school levels, to house these students that you're talking about. Thank you for the presentation and the update.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions for Dr. Gripp?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Great presentation, and anybody who falls asleep at your presentation hasn't sat through some of the real boring ones I've sat through, so.
I'll tell my wife that.
I wasn't going to say it, but to my right. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the hard work you put in. Mark and Jeff, thank you guys for, for going through it in such excruciating detail. I think the most important point that the two of you brought out is, a study is great, but it's numbers, it's very black and white. Life is not. There's a human element to everything, right? Mark talked about, you can talk about a classroom can hold X amount of kids, but we can't quantify necessarily how many classrooms we're going to end up needing for special needs children, where there's going to be a lot less.
That's right.
Okay? If we make any changes to our basic skills courses, or to our gifted and talented programs, these are all going to be variables that will affect the number of children going into each classroom. And of course, we can predict all we want. Who could have ever predicted the pandemic, right? And the influx of people who moved out of the city to the suburbs, who wouldn't have under other circumstances? So, the one factor that I always say we can't quantify is the human factor, because we can predict, we can, to the best of our knowledge, based on historical precedent and statistics, say, this is what will most likely happen. However, you don't know. We, we couldn't tell you now exactly how many new kids will enroll in this district in the next week, let alone the next month, let alone the next year. We don't know. There's so many factors that are going, the economy, that, that changes every day. So, I think that studies are great, and numbers and facts and statistics are wonderful, and we can base so many things on it, but we never, as Mark and Jeff pointed out so well, can subtract the human factor. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Dr. Gripp, you're very brave, you came back again. Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
Yes.
Mr. Hung, I apologize. You were almost done.
I'm not giving you a hard time this time, okay? Okay, so, Mr. Sizmore, Mr. Winston, and my friend Vicki here, raise very good points, but capacity and demographic survey are two different concepts. I'm going to focus, their, their, their points are very good, right, right at the target, but my focus will be on the, the demographic survey. So, personally, I hope so many people purchase property to this town. When they come, they replace sellers, always I pay attention, and especially ask, how many children does the seller have? It's almost one, zero, but my client coming in with two, three, even four children. So the inward migration is a lot bigger, in my, my personal experience. And the method you used there is the cohort survival rate, the method, which is based on a research by Stephens, and that was published in 18, 1987, it's almost 40 years old, and this paper was only cited by eight times. So this study was based on the school district, is all large school district, 30,000 students. And the smallest one is 17,000, it's a lot bigger than East Brunswick's size. In that paper, it says, this meth, method, CSR method, will be more accurate for a stable community. But East Brunswick, we are facing redevelopment, we have trying to 1,700 units. So my, but, my, I should say, you know, your number are very good, your presentation is great, I appreciate that, but I believe the number will be bigger than you have, because we have too big inward migrant rate. We have large redevelopment, compare the size with less, a little bit less than 50,000 population, so I anticipate we will have more new student, the enrollment will be a lot more than you predicted. But, your job is great, okay? And we'll have another time, we'll talk about capacity, but it's not your job for the capacity. So I don't know where, where the 9,500 came from, when was that calculated, but we are dealing with new, very significant change, that's it. We have a lot more special add student moving to town. Now we're getting almost 20%. Those students need a lot of special rooms, need a lot of space, so that will be different topic, so that is not for you. So your job is great, done, thank you.
This is true. Yeah, thanks, no, this is really good discussion, and I really respect all the, the analysis that's really been done, you know, on, on your own time, and I, I could see a lot of thought was put into this. You know, I guess the point I just want to make is, there's not going to be a point estimate that's going to be right. And if it, if it's right, I'll, I'll take you out to dinner in five years when we can prove that it's all right. And I think what we have to do is plan for scenarios, and a range of outcomes. So, we can't sit here and say, this is the number, and say, we're going to plan for it because if it's not right, then what, right? So, we, we have to plan for, you know, scenarios and a range of uncertainty.
Very good point.
Last thing, I just wanted to, do I get dinner if I'm right? Props it to Mr. Gripp.
So how the conversation's gotten back to that food?
Yes, the food, you get cookies.
I need to eat.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Gripp?
So, Mark, if you are right, I'll take, I'll take you out for dinner.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for coming back.
Have a good evening.
Much appreciated. Okay, and the excitement continues, and Jerry Schenk, I see you in the back, is going to come and present our facilities budget for us tonight.
No, I'm fine. I got your sweater.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to present the budget for the city management department for 2022.
We can't hear you, Jerry.
All right. What?
No, there's a lot of, I think we need order.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let's, let's get, get.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, that's better, okay. I'll speak into the mic. And I'm wearing some ear assistive devices, so I can pick you up in the microphone, so that's what this is. So, so we'll go ahead and continue. So as you know, the facilities management budget advocates for a few things, advocates and provides for buildings and properties that are environmentally comfortable, well-maintained, clean, safe, and efficient. It also allows us to be compliant with federal, state, township, loads laws, codes, and ordinances, and also board policies and regulations. Next slide. And the department is broken down into three major areas, so maintenance, custodial operations, and grounds. And here's just a little breakout of how our funds are allocated. So, building systems and maintenance and repairs allows for electrical repairs, concrete and asphalt services, and then all the building trades, so electrical, carpentry, plumbing, Next, the buildings, the, the budget supports environmental services to comply with all those federal mandates and, and board policies that I mentioned earlier. Adhira is the Asbestos Hazardous Emergency Response Act. Indoor air quality, air combustion assessments, that measures the efficiency of our boiler operations, to make sure we're not putting out too many pollutants, and the pieces of, and the boilers are operating efficiency, and then right-to-know. And then you have custodial services, which encompasses cleaning, sanitation, and disinfecting operations, and then also trash removal. The third and final part, a piece of our budget is grounds, which we have a substantial amount of. So it advocates to maintain physical education and athletic fields, our courtyards, irrigation systems, landscaping, trees, playgrounds, and something that we hadn't have very much this season yet is snow and ice removal operations. But I am not complaining about that. So the final piece of this presentation is a pie chart that breaks out how those expenditures are, are broken out. So you can see the largest part of our, our budget is custodial operations, keeping our facilities clean. The next is our building systems and repair maintenance. The next after that, the third, is grounds maintenance, that makes up about 18% of our budget. And you have uniforms and smaller items, being the environmental compliance programs, where professional services come in and evaluate facilities, and make sure we're compliant with all federal, state mandates and township laws and codes. As I did last year, I think it's important to mention the small breakout of HVAC furnace, burner replacements, and just various other costs. These, even though it's a small percent, these are large repairable items or components of our systems that need to be replaced, that we're expecting to fail, so, so it could be a compressor, it could be a circulation pump on our heating system, and that requires services, special services to come in and repair, replace. So, over, over time, we've analyzed several years, we've made, analyzed several, several years of expenditures, and expected those items to replace, so we're properly funded, so our, our schools can maintain, we can maintain operations and support activities. So, that's, that's really, that's really it. I'm open for, ready to answer any questions that you might have. Anything that you'd like to discuss?
Questions for Jerry?
Thank you so much for your report.
You're welcome.
Very thankful for keeping the facilities in tip-top shape here.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Reese, I can barely hear.
I don't have my thing on, there you go. Thank you for your report.
Yes.
And thank you for all you do to keep the, our facilities in excellent shape. So I just have a couple of questions on some of the items that were, that were not approved. And, so, there was a request for an HVAC technician, I guess a master technician who would oversee, you know, some of our more advanced technological items that we have for.
Correct.
What, what do we do if we can't have that? What's like the solution for now, if we can't afford to have that person?
Can I jump in on that, please? Okay. So, Mrs. Reese, at this time, throughout all the budget presentations, none of the requested staffing has been moved into an approved status.
Okay.
Because we need to see where we are in terms of a bottom line.
Okay.
And then, superintendent and other administrators will have a conversation regarding, what are the priorities that need to be addressed? So, but to answer your question, if I may, I'm going to, and certainly jump in, please, Jerry, but, you know, we, Jerry's trying to anticipate what we're doing with our HVAC systems. We have done, we have introduced many new systems in the district. So it's a matter of, do we contract out versus have our own staff do preventive maintenance and repairs? We have HVAC staff, HVAC technicians on staff at this time, but we've got new systems still coming on. In fact, we have a project right now that is underway in four of our elementary schools that will even further expand the level of our HVAC, and particularly air conditioning systems.
Wonderful.
So, you know, he's trying to be proactive.
Right, to have someone on board who can, you know, has a technological background to take care of it.
Exactly.
And I applaud that, and I appreciate you explaining that, because in our, in our paperwork, you know, it says not approved, right? So, I, you know, I'm not on the finance, we're staffing press not approved, so that explains it. And then, and then there's, so then the other questions that I had, so some of these items, whether it's Jerry or Bernie, like for the water main, you know, we've been having issues with water mains in the township, you know, everywhere.
Yes.
Water mains, so, this, this repair of the high school water main, that's another item that might still be handled, or is that, is that, because it's listed under the area not covered yet by the budget?
Correct, correct. So, anything that we can't handle in-house, we get contract services, that goes back to the HVAC question.
Okay.
So we don't let anything, anything sit. If something needs to be addressed and we can't do it in-house, then we get contracted services to help us out. As far as the, the water main valve at the high school, it's my job to keep administration aware of, of what could be a potential issue out there. Right now, this is a part of a system that needs to be addressed, but it's not urgent, it's not like an emergency.
So you're looking ahead, what some of the areas of focus should be?
Yes.
Which is wonderful, and I appreciate you doing that.
Correct.
So, that's great. And then the only other last part was, and it's just kind of, I guess, related to our discussion about new high school versus fixing the high school, you know, again, it's not immediate, but we talked about like $7 million in high school roof replacements. So that's something to keep in mind, I think, as we look forward, ahead of the longevity of the high school, that there'll be a point where, of course, we maintain our facilities to the best of our abilities, but there's a, a point where the cost of maintaining the facilities may exceed the cost of putting in new facilities.
Correct.
Is that, is that what I'm, is that the right assessment that I'm making from this?
Yes, it's absolutely correct, absolutely correct. The infrastructure that we have now, you know, the, their, the original parts of the high school are 50, 60 years old, and then we've done, the board has approved different renovations to join things together, modernize, but at the end of the day, you're still dealing with that old infrastructure, the old piping, the, the old roof systems that, that you have, old HVAC systems. So at some point, you, there, you're going to have to, we are going to have to evaluate how long the useful life is and versus replacement, and what will, what will move us into the 21st century with supplying classrooms to support that, that type of instruction, flexible classrooms, modern spaces, yes.
So, and, and you want to be responsible in the job that you do to anticipate these needs, we, as a district, we don't want to wait to the last second where there's an emergency situation.
Correct.
And so you're trying to prepare ahead of time, and so that, and in fact, if we are, if we don't do a new high school down the road, we may be in an emergency situation, you're saying, down the road?
With, with some things, with some things, we could be, we could be.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
So, Jimmy, you have a question?
Yeah, I was, a couple of questions. One, I was wondering, do these, does, does the cost reflected in '23, '24 reflect what we're seeing in inflation of, of cost, because we know HVAC is significantly, you know, backwatered, the, the supplies are short. Do these cost estimates reflect the rising prices that we're seeing in, in things like this?
So if I, I just want to ask for clarity on that. Are you talking about within the tentatively approved part of the budget?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to, Jerry, jump in, but I will tell you, on contracted services, yes, because there are built-in escalators and cost of living adjustments. That are contractual, for example, within our custodial operations, that's already set.
I'm thinking more materials.
That will vary, I defer to Jerry to speak more about, about those.
If we baked those expected higher prices into these prices. If we baked those expected higher prices into these prices already.
Yes, yes, the simple answer is yes.
Yeah.
So what we do is we analyze expenditures over three or four years based on how many, how many pumps that we brought, how many compressors, and different parts. And then we, we take an average of that based off of things that we, that we know, additional services or additional things that we know are going to be repaired, and then we adjust that accordingly. So we get quotes for, for everything, for things that we anticipate, services and supplies that we're going to need for the next year, and so those are, those are all adjusted in our allocation.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the question, is this reflects current pricing, not pricing, even average over the three years, you really can't use that because prices have gone up so much.
And I'll even add, to help stem that a little bit, because the lead times on, on some things, you're exactly right, are astronomical.
Right.
So what the, what our department has been doing over the, over the number of years is we've been duplicating where we can and where it makes sense, buying additional components. Take, for example, our unit ventilators in our classrooms, there's a heating coil and a cooling coil in there. If we, if one needs to be repaired, then we buy an additional, additional coil for that same type unit that's in that building. So if we have, if there, if it fails, if we have another one fail, we can get that, we can make that repair, get that building oper, or get the room operational again a lot quicker while we order another part.
Thanks.
So, so we do try to, we do try to increase our bin stock, if you will.
And then the other question is kind of related to cost that there, with the IRA legislation that was passed, there's, there was funding that's out there, you know, what, what, what can we do to make sure that we're looking at the available, whether it's state or federal funding that becomes available as a result of the IRA legislation that provides, you know, whether it's additional incentives or, or things like that? So for HVAC, for example, there are incentives for higher efficiency and just making sure that we're, our, you know, our engineers are taking advantage of every available incentive that's out there to, to offset some of these higher costs.
So we, we, along with our professionals, monitor the information that comes our way with regard to the incentives that may be out there. The Department of Education puts out a considerable amount of information, in fact, they, they put out broadcasts throughout the course of every week that identify a whole host of items, including finance-related items, so we monitor those. You know, I think it was the last board meeting agenda, the board approved two rod grant applications, regular operating district applications. That is a fin, a finance opportunity to help us address fire alarm systems in the two buildings. So we're always watching for that.
There's new, there's a lot new that's out there, that's, and you guys have enough to do to, you know, running the district, I would expect our engineers and architects to be the ones that are keeping an eye out for that and, and bringing that, so I would just make sure that they're doing that.
The, the other thing I want, I'd like to just note, and that is, you know, through the pandemic and the resources that were available through the federal government, there was quite a bit that we did in terms of HVAC improvements, modifications, replacements, and new addition into the buildings. But quite honestly, it's just not enough. There's just so much that has to be done.
It's ongoing. We have a lot of facilities.
And when we look at the infrastructure needs of the district, we are looking at the, literally the tens of millions of dollars to be able to address things like roofs, paving, sidewalks, you know, basic things that are not an attractive, you know.
Necessity.
You know, exciting kind of a thing, but it has to do with health and safety.
Okay. You guys get to do it out.
Jeff was up, and then this.
Good, doing it all right. After Vicki.
Getting very nervous here, it's very, being too nice, but thank you. So I also wanted to thank you, echo what Barbara said so eloquently, thank you so much for you and your staff doing such a great job, taking care of our, our buildings and grounds, it's greatly appreciated. Just a very, very quick reminder, not, only a few of us serve on the finance committee, right? So we're very, we get all of these reports the week before, and we, we go through them in great detail with the budget managers. But just to remind you, if you look at the way the budget reports are constructed, they're very, they're worded very specifically, tentatively approved, not pending, pending, could be approved, because this is still a work in progress, regardless of what's intentively approved, not yet approved. What's going to happen is after we plug in all the things that are not variables, all the numbers that we must plug in to run the district, then we can sit down and look at the things that are not in the budget, that are tentatively not approved or pending approval. And then Bernie will lead us through the process of deciding, the board will make decisions on what will be the end result. So even if something falls in a certain section, it doesn't diminish its importance, its priority, it's a matter of there's only so much money, and we will have, as always, tough decisions to make. So, just, you know, not everybody's on the finance committee and working with these things so closely.
No, that's, that's a very good point, because we have the benefit of having this beforehand, and this is probably one of the few committees we're not serving on, it is a little bit harder for the board members that then come and you're hearing it for the first time, so.
Thank you. Just a quick question, I think I know the answer, Michelle, how, how long have you been in the role?
Seven years.
Yeah, so I thought it was relatively recent. So, I've been on the board for four, and I, and I, I will say that each year, it becomes more and more apparent that you're the right person in the role because of preventive maintenance, and I think you inherited a pretty tough situation where that wasn't necessarily the case in the past, and that's been my observation. Four years ago, I know there was water pouring on electrical switches in the high school that were covered with plastic bags, am I right?
Unfortunately.
Okay. And, and I have not heard that, and now I think you're finally at least even or slightly ahead of the game in so many things, and I admire that. So this is really a compliment to the work that you're doing, I think you make a huge difference, and I think ultimately, when you're given either a newly renovated or a new building, I know it'll outlast the 70 or so years this prior one with somebody like you setting the standard on how we maintain our assets. So thank you very, very much for what you did.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. I appreciate the board's support.
Yeah.
Great, Mr. Winston.
It really was.
Mr. Winston, that was great, because, you know, since the topic is high school, and some people may think you don't need one, but you leading that would be a great idea.
Right.
Also, if we get a new high school, would there be some savings that we're losing now from the high school, you know, you have old house, it's just leaky, so do you think that building a new high school would be beneficial for saving money for this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Obviously, I don't know where you did, the top of high, however, you know, just put out there to the public that it will be saving. So, in fact, whatever it costs, we're still gonna, you know, sort of piles and all these things that you can do to make it more efficient, so building a high school would be beneficial for possibly saving money.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. There's, if you just take for, for now, just take for example, one of our RTU units on the, on the high school is 20 years old.
Right.
The lifespan for that type of equipment is 15, 20, 25 years. So during that time, there's been various improvements in, in variable frequency drive motors and, and other, and other components that operate a little bit more efficiently. So when we bring, when we bring a new facility online, all that stuff is going to be, you know, high-tech, designed, very efficient, and so we'll, we'll even save on, on that part, and even as far as the building envelope with more efficient windows, doors, seals, all that kind of stuff, so.
So to let the public know in town that we're going to save money.
Yes.
For the high school.
Yes, well.
There's so much spending.
And what, what are you saying, like enhanced curriculum and programming, is that what you're saying? Because that would be very bad.
Okay, Mr. Hong.
Since it's a pretty late, so I'm gonna make myself sure. I'm trying to piggyback Barbara, Mr. Winston, and my, my fellow board members' points. So I believe, because due to the age, the nature of the, the system, 70 years old or 50 years old, something is really, reaches tipping point, so it's time to fail. That's why I really appreciate you guys to provide our student a safe and clean teaching, learning environment. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I do have one question for you after the question. So in the big, big pie chart, so it says custodial, trash removal, and related services and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know how the trash is removed from school background. My question is, you'd have to tell me yes or no. So is there any way we can have a shared service with the township to have more efficiency? That's a yes or no? You don't need to, I, is, is there any way we can share the service with the township to remove the trash?
That's, I believe that's exactly what we have now.
Okay, that's great.
So the contractors that the township uses, they, they're contracted to support the schools and, and remove trash. So we try to use as much shared services as possible. In the finance committee, we talked about, we talked about chemical, chemical removal, and we try to, we try to go to the township and drop off things, but because we're such a large organization, we can't take everything there, then we have to have it professionally disposed of. So, so we do try to partner with the township as much, as much as possible to do that, and that's exactly what we do with our, our trash and refuse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was my sticker shock at the meeting, the chemical.
I thought you were doing that.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
No, I would fall to say that, with $64,000, I would. Any other questions for Jerry?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much again for your report.
Thank you, Jerry.
Dr. Figueroa, you're going to give us the student services?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, I'm on down.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to discuss the student services budget for the 2023, 2024 school year. As you know, in student services, we're all about student health and well-being. We basically are tasked with the support, taking care of the whole child. In terms of our base budget, you'll see health services. What I will do in a few moments is I'll, I'll talk to you more about the therapeutic counseling services, which is a big part of the budget that I am proposing. We also have our guidance student assistance services, health and physical education curriculum. So as you see here, the guidance services are mostly for student assistance, specialists, materials, school guidance, service supplies. We have improvement of instruction, which is our diversity, equity, and inclusion program, which really focuses on making a more inclusive environment for all students. General administration would be copiers, supplies, office supplies, professional development, registration fees, things of that nature. I'm going over to the big part of the pie, the health services. What I'd like to do is really talk about the therapeutic counseling component of that, which is the lion's share of what we have. Now, prior to the pandemic, the board had the forward thinking to make sure we had enough supports for student mental health. When COVID came, that only increased and intensified the frequency of our mental health So that foresight was extremely important for us. What I'd like to do for this coming year is ask that we increase the number of clinicians. Now presently, we use Effective School Solutions, or ESS. Their clinicians work in.
Facilities?
Facilities. Can we add that to your budget? So our therapeutic counseling services actually go in three tiers. Tier three is for the more involved, more wraparound services for students that need that. Tier two is more flexible, more of a moderate service, and then tier one is more professional development and family engagement services. Okay? What I'm proposing is to put, keep two clinicians at the high school level, one of those clinicians, I'm sorry, an additional clinician at the flex, so it's actually three, if you look at '23, '24, would be two at the high school, one in the flex, of course, that's all in the high school, 2.5 clinicians at Churchill, one at U's, and one in our elementary ERI And the professional development, as you can see there, is embedded in each one of these. Now, just to give you an idea of what ESS can do for us, ESS can help us with individual and group needs, needs assessment on psychiatric services, substance abuse issues, and as I mentioned before, professional development, and also the family engagement component. That's all part of what ESS does for us. So on a daily basis, ESS is there if there's a crisis with a particular student. Also, ESS is available for us, the services that it provides, so that if there's a possibility of bringing a student back from an out-of-district placement, that's also something that they may be able to provide services to have that happen for us. In addition, they allow us to keep students in district that we would otherwise have to move out of district or find out-of-district placement for. Now that's a really big component, that particular piece, because an out-of-district placement may average close to $100,000 or more based on the educational services, additional resources needed, transportation, et cetera. So this year, since September to now, we have had a, been able to avoid the cost from the cost factor of $1.9 million approximately. So 19 students have remained in district based on the services that we were able to provide and the services we have in the other parts of, of our district to keep our own students in our own district. So that is all based on the support that this board has given us, and it's, it's greatly appreciated, I know the families appreciate it, student services, some of them which are here tonight, greatly appreciate that support. So I wanted to make sure you knew that, because without the board's support and the forward thinking, we could never have gotten to that point. I am willing to take any questions or any comments that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Figueroa, and that's a very important, you know, I used to always say that we can't educate our kids if we can't keep them safe, which is why security was so important, but you know, safe sometimes means emotionally as well, and what you've done in your department and the women in the back that I've worked well with and, and know just every day how above and beyond you go. It's, it's unbelievable, and the public will probably never know the extent that this creeps into their personal lives and how terrific you are. So we appreciate it, because even before the pandemic, mental health was a crisis in this country, and it's been even more so. So the fact that you are so forward-thinking, personally incredibly, incredibly thankful for that, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Sizmar, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just a comment, the work you and your team do, amazing. I do remember that discussion, it was, I, I could be wrong, because my memory's a little dusty, but it was something around $300,000 that you had brought in and said, we're bringing in these clinicians and things, and I, and I was learning about what that meant. And at the time, you know, it was, it was amazing to, to, for you and your team to bring it in at that point, nobody knew the pandemic was coming, nobody knew what was going to have with, happen with mental health in our country. And this was so forward-thinking, and what I would say now, you know, you gotta look at the dollars and cents every once in a while, but I mean, you can't put a price on helping people. on helping people with their mental health. So it was, uh, forward-thinking, it was money well-spent, uh, you know, if, if there's the increases in here, in my personal opinion, money well-spent, and, uh, yeah, you're taking care of the mental health of our, our children, our community. Bravo to you and your team, so that's what I have to say. So, thank you.
Sure. Mrs. Reese.
I'm just gonna also say a similar message. Thank you for you, what you and your department does. I mean, there are students that are benefiting from your services every day, and it may, like we had said here, you can't learn if you're not feeling well, if your mental health is not intact, especially after COVID, these are very important things. I just wanted to ask about Hammerhill. So again, I, I, I apologize if I'm asking because already this is going to be discussed in the finance and, but you, you, you want, how many counselors at Hammerhill?
Well, what I'm asking is to keep the clinic, we're talking about the therapeutic clinician.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I would like to keep one full-time clinician there.
Absolutely. Okay. Cause there was a request for, um, is that different than the, the one where?
I think you're talking about staffing requests.
Yeah.
So, again, Mrs. Reese, the staffing requests are different than this. Therapeutic counseling is a contracted service.
Okay.
The staffing that, uh, is reflected in the budget document that is pending.
Yes.
Will follow the same route as we had discussed previously with, um, Jerry and his budget presentation. Once we get to a bottom line, then assessing, um, what the priorities are in terms of staffing.
I just wanted to express my support for that request because the work that you do is amazing, and the fact that, you know, this is a transit, and I'm sure this is already in the works, so I'm sure you're already looking into this, but it's a transition time for the kids, and even, and of course now it's, it's even better because they're at fourth and fifth, so it's a little, uh, you know, from fourth to fifth, it's a little less of, um, that time period where we were looking at before. It's not as a big jump, and they're prepared, and it's a nice transition, but still, I, you keep the numbers so much lower than what the national average is for counselors to student, and I love that we would keep that, uh, even at Hughes because they're, they're at an age where they need that extra guidance. So thank you for looking into that, and thank you for always making us at the forefront of mental health services here.
Thank you.
Mr. Winston.
Yeah, Dr. Figueroa, look, I've, uh, I've banged on your head of mental health, uh, pretty early on. I have a huge understanding and proponent, uh, of it. I, I think what needs to be pointed out in the conversations that you and I have had is clearly recognizing while the COVID virus emergency may be behind us, the remnants of a ten-year plan, and, uh, not only for students, but for staff and parents and community and everybody, uh, in our township. And I do believe that, uh, the services that are being provided right now always have that as an earmark in how you're approaching, uh, students, uh, through experience and hearing feedback from parents. I like the fact that it's still on our radar, and I don't see it coming off for a long, long time. So, good job on that. Good proactive work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Becker.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. You and your department are amazing. I can remember years ago, starting discussions that the board would have, going back fifteen, eighteen years ago, uh, about how to keep more kids in district, and because least restrictive environment was so important, and can we provide it in district? And ca, it's, it wasn't even a matter of, yeah, we save money by not having to send out of district, but it was the best thing for the kids. And you have continued that in such outstanding fashion, and, and again, your entire staff. I would also like to mention the contributions that, um, Dr. Valeski has brought to this particular, uh, conversation. He encouraged us to invest in so many of the mental health programs, and I need to mention the flex program that you brought to us. We talked about this the other night in finance. The flex program may not have huge numbers, but if the flex program is to identify kids who are at risk of perhaps not graduating, maybe dropping out of school, um, if each year, one child graduates a high school that wouldn't have otherwise, that's a pretty fantastic thing, and that's what we're here for. So, thank you for, yeah, we're supportive and, and, and when we work real hard to, to give you the support, but thank you for bringing us these wonderful initiatives.
Thank you, and I want to recognize Dr. Bowley and Mrs. Tibbetts, who oversee that program along with Jamie Kennard, and so it's the implementation, the, the quality of the staff that you have to oversee it, and we look at it all the time as one student, one success, that's, that's really great. And so, our numbers are much higher than what we anticipated when we forecasted this many, many years ago, but every student, uh, goes into that program with, with such value, and they're treated with such respect, and the customization of their path to make sure they get what they need to be successful with East Brunswick is, is very meaningful.
That was one of your first big initiatives when we first brought you on.
Yeah.
We knew we had the right person then. Look at that, a quiet board. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Glass, I almost forgot you. See?
I just quietly, I've been very quiet. I was actually reflecting on what Mrs. Becker had said about, she remembers years ago, because I'm sitting here thinking, I remember yesterday, I had an incident that just has me a little quiet and a little reflective, but I don't think, I have a deep appreciation for our numbers increasing in these clinicians. Uh, I think that what we're doing is great, and I am fully in support of doing more because I don't just think it benefits our students, and I, until you're sort of in there with them, you know, students have a certain amount of access to adults, and they have their families, and then they are with us so much of the day, and it's a huge responsibility. And I think that the weight on the staff of student mental health and students in crisis and students who are asking for help is a huge, huge stressor, and I think that your, your team has been bringing more and more services in for the students doesn't just lighten what the students are carrying, what the families are carrying, but I think it's very, very good for the mental health of staff as well. I, I personally had a very, very relief-filled day working with a student who needed crisis intervention in my own job, and it's just such a difference when services like this are available for all people involved. So, thank you for what you're doing, and I'm just fully in support of kind of all these initiatives.
Mr. Hahn.
So people, people always said, the board spent most of East Brunswick's tax money. So your presentation tells people how the money is spent, how you spend most money wisely to, for the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Amen.
Question. So in this table, so for the Churchill, now Churchill start from, uh, no, this one, yes. So this year, starting this year, Churchill has three grades, so you only increase half of the staff. So is this enough? Two-point-five condition is, condition is enough for the three graders?
It's a very good question. Uh, I will tell you that, you know, we also, we in student services are always thinking about our students first and foremost, but we also have to realize that we're a part of a bigger team, and the financial aspect of what we do is extremely important. So, we believe that we can service our students with the numbers that I provided you today. I will tell the board that I will be asking for something next year, depending on, again, we're very fluent in student services. It all depends on our kids. So every day changes the direction of the ship, so to speak, it could. So I, but I can tell you that, and, and, uh, Mr. Winston said it very, very eloquently before, you know, this is a long project. This is something, we're in this for the long haul, and we can't make any mistakes. We have to make sure we're on it. If we make mistakes, students suffer. School climate suffers, as, as Ms. Glass just said, uh, a few moments ago. So we have to try to make sure that we don't make mistakes, but, and we have a phenomenal team of student assistance specialists, school counselors, and they are stretched. I think we, um, Ms. Reese talked about the numbers. We are very stretched right now, but we understand we're part of a team, and we all have to, we have to look at it that way, and our people have gone above and beyond to make sure that our students' needs are addressed, and will continue to be that. But I will tell you that the needs, and, you know, you don't have to hear it just from me and understanding from here, it's across the country. There are the needs, and, and we're seeing it, and I know I said this to you last year, and I'm going to say it again, the needs of the students are getting more and more.
Complicated.
Yeah, complicated is a good word. It's okay. And they're getting younger and younger, and this is, this is what really is scary, you know? So, for us, every day is a new day because we're looking at things that we may not have seen before or not have seen it with such young kids. I'm going to throw this out to you just so you have an idea of what I'm talking about. Dangerous threats, and it could be something as simple as, uh, writing a picture of hurting someone, or saying something very scary to a teacher or to another student. This can be classified as a dangerous threat. Last year, from September through January, we had seventy-one dangerous threats in all of our elementaries combined. This year already, same timeframe, we have a hundred and twelve. So thi, this idea of mental health is really starting to affect younger and younger students. So, as we plan, and I'm looking at the people that I'll be planning with a lot with, and I appreciate them being here this evening, um, we are looking at that aspect, and the younger the students are, we want to get to them as soon as we can, so that we can try to keep them in district and also help them to realize their potential, and they can't do it if they're, if they have social, emotional issues that are not allowing them to, to be with other students or to work in a school environment. So, I appreciate you asking that question, and, you know, and, and we're trying to do this the best we can to make sure that, um, you know, we're considerate of everyone else and, and all the needs in the district.
I cannot agree with you more. Not just students get complicated, the entire society is getting a lot more complicated. This society, two thousand and twenty-three, is totally different from two thousand and eighteen. So I want to say this here again, thank you.
Thank you.
And that number, oh, you want to?
Yeah. So, Dr. Figueroa, just to recap, um, those dangerous threat numbers, last year, seventy-one?
Yes, from September to.
To January. Seventy-one. This year, one hundred and twelve, and this is the key piece. Last year, the elementary schools were K to five, and this year they're K to four.
Well, let me just, I believe my numbers are K through six. I'm saying elementary using Hammerhill numbers as well, as an elementary school. So I apologize.
That makes me feel better, though.
No, I apologize, I wasn't clear. That's my fault.
But to Dr. Figueroa's point, and, and this is not even planned, but I remember, I, I review all of these type of cases, and when these, uh, these threats come through, and I reviewed two of them tonight right before the board meeting, and I remember the days when you would see one in, in maybe a semester, or one in a school year. Those, that was a very long time ago, and to see two a night is, is just the acknowledgement of the change in what our students are going through.
Mrs. Chu has a question.
Yeah, I, I wasn't going to add to the comments because it was so well said by, by all the other board members, but, you know, when I saw the addition at the elementary and, and with this discussion, I just felt like I had to jump in, just getting to the students early rather than to wait for a problem to escalate, you know, I think is so important, and let's keep an eye on the resources at that elementary level, because if we can help the child earlier, we can avoid that, you know, a future issue, that, that would be so much better for, for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have something real quick.
Sure.
So my daughter is going through, you know, our school system now, eleventh grade, and, um, she had a really great principal back in the day, and, you know, so for the children, I want to say thank you, and the parents. So, you know, we're so focused on academics and vision and all these things out, but there's another component, so, you know, kids are the ones that we have to say, you know, thank you. So my daughter says thank you, you know, because it's important, because I see the change in her progression and getting to be a nice young lady at sixteen, where she was a little bit, you know, different at thirteen or twelve, so it goes to your department. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
If you could do me one favor before we let you go, um, those women in the back, I'd like to give them a shout-out. Would you like to have them stand up?
Yes, if you could. Louise Soltana, Danielle Blaylock here. Vanessa Amatoro is also part of that, she's, she's been sick unfortunately the last couple of days, but I know she would have been here as well. We couldn't do it without them and their teams.
Yes.
And it, you know, and it really, it's everyone, you know? These are the people from student services. It's the principals, it's the teachers, the nurses, of course, which are part of student services, security officers, it's everybody, and really, we couldn't do what we do if it wasn't for the people up here. And Dr. Valeski, your support is, is just been tremendous, and your understanding and, uh, your guidance has been wonderful, so thank you.
You make us look good because, as you said, you couldn't do what you do, that's the point, and everyone up here, I think, would agree, and we thank you all for what you do, because keeping these kids.
So just as we wrap up, um, key dates, we have a couple more budget presentations, not tonight, but coming up, March second and March sixteenth. Other key dates, February twenty-eighth, is not that far off, uh, will be the governor's budget address. State aid is typically released two days later, so that will be March second. And then, as we run into the home stretch, March sixteenth will be our tentative budget adoption. That is the tentative budget, so there is opportunity for changes to the budget from that date, uh, and up to, but preceding, the public hearing. The public hearing on May fourth must represent ultimately what the final budget will be, and then one week later, on May eleventh, will be the final budget adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Juliana. Okay, I know one of the favorite, my favorite parts of the evening, and Megan, we had a little taste before, but tell us what's going on at EBHS, please?
Okay, so, um, recently, we've had a lot of clubs host different events, so we had, as mentioned before, NHS had their blood drive, um, so that was very successful. We also had, um, Mr. EBHS recently, that was like a fundraiser kind of thing. Um, I was not there, I had some friends who went, um, they said it was a good experience. It also happened last year, so, um, it's like a year-to-year thing, I guess. And we also had Valentine's Day celebrations going on at school, um, around Tuesday, so we had, um, our high school's Spanish Honor Society, every year they do their, um, flower and chocolate sale, or candy, um, and so they did that again this year, so on Valentine's Day, it's hard to go through a hallway without seeing like six different people holding flowers. And a lot of people bought flowers for themselves, and you can write like a little note, so my friend was telling me about how, um, somebody like got, like bought a flower for themselves, like to support, um, the Honor Society, but also like they wrote themselves a note as like a self-affirmation, so I thought that was very nice as well. And also on, um, before Valentine's Day, um, TRIM, our Music Honor Society, had like a little cupid house that people could audition for, um, and they like sang songs, played music, so that was, that was pretty fun, so.
Thank you. I, I love that. I don't know, she's way better of a high school experience than some of us, right? I mean, I thought this was the greatest place ever, but I'm telling you, you got way more going on, girl, so, good for you, I appreciate that. And now this brings us to the good of the cause for the public, and I apologize that it's been such a long wait, and I'm hoping some of the children that left early were not hoping to speak because, um, I didn't realize it's tough when you have this many reports going on. But, the Port of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. A participant will be limited to three minutes duration, the lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device. The lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the Board Secretary. And my usual disclaimer of this is the time for the public to speak to the board, and we take everything you say seriously, never mistake our silence as not listening, not caring, and any items that need further addressing, I'm going to ask you to leave your information with the two lovely ladies in the front or second row. So that being said, is there anyone this evening that would like to speak to the board? Come on up to the podium, and if you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Nancy Elbasti, Five Days and Drive. I just wanted to thank the board for considering our request for Eid in the school calendar and incorporating into the EB public school calendar. This is not just a day off for us, it means so much more than that. It means that we are accepted and welcomed and included in the community and a family, just like Dr. Valeski was saying, EB is a family. I was really happy yesterday when I heard that Holmdel has now issued or included Eid on their school calendar. And I grew up in Holmdel, I, I did my high school years there, and I never in a million years would think that Holmdel would have Eid on the public school calendar. And I am hoping and very optimistic that East Brunswick will join the thirty-five districts that now recognize their Muslim community members and embrace them. And again, I just wanted to thank Dr. Valeski, Ms. Karen, Ms. Janet, and the entire board for your consideration and time and effort and listening and attention.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with the board this evening? Come on down if you'll just give us your name and address for the record, please.
David Pavlik at nineteen Buckingham Drive, and I'm going to second what you said about Eid. Yes, we are. And I just want to just real quick say absolutely, as a Jewish person, I am absolutely one-hundred percent in support that the Muslim community be respected and given the Eid holiday. So please make that happen immediately. Come on, guys, make it happen, all right? Now, reason I'm here is in support of the IT department. I had a bit of an issue two weeks ago. My son's account was disabled, not password locked. I have an IT background, I understand the process to reset his password. His account was disabled. He could not get into his accounts at all. I had to wait until the next day, I had to take the computer into the IT department, representative at Hammershold, and they had to take the computer, reset everything, and then, sure enough, earlier this week, it happened the second time. So I emailed the IT department, and I actually got a response back from Nicholas, as you guys know. And I have to give him a shout out. Nicholas, I appreciate your email.
He's right back there.
He's right back there.
Nick! Dude! Shout out, man. So you're, you're familiar with this situation. And I just want to say that Nicholas, in his reply, expressed that he doesn't have the staffing to provide the support after hours. So I'm batting for you, a hundred percent batting for you. There's no reason to not have support for students when they're at home trying to get their homework done and they're faced with their accounts being disabled or whatever other challenge they may be faced with. Give Nick what he needs, please. Find a way to help support him so he can support every single student in every single grade. We're so IT-intensive now. Please, make that happen. And one other note on the IT front, please try your best, though I haven't discussed this with Nick, please do your best to extend the Canvas system into Hammershold as well as the Office 365 environment. I myself had rolled out previously an Office 365 environment in a K through eight school. I had fourth graders who were programming in VBA, so I know that they can handle this even at the fourth grade level. I'm just asking for fifth and sixth graders to have access to the Office 365. Yes, it costs more money, again, we're getting into the money things, but I'm telling you, our students are able to do it if you give them the opportunity. And as parents, Canvas, I can't wait for Canvas next year. I am so frustrated with Google Classroom with the dynamics of how Hughes is with all the different classes, all the different teachers, all the different dynamics of it. I, I need Canvas so that it's more structured and I can follow along with my son who has special needs.
Ten seconds.
Thank you very much for Student Services, shout out to you guys as well, he's taking advantage of it, very much appreciate that. But we need to be able to provide parents as well access to Canvas so that they can take better care of their kids at home.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you, Nick.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public portion and go on to our Board of Education agenda. May I please have a motion for our Board of Agenda, Items One and Two.
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Before I just, we have discussion on this, I just want to call your attention to the fact that, number one, you'll notice, is the new calendar for the year. And I know that we always talk about how we listen, and we are here to support the public and to hear the public. And so that being said, I would actually like to thank Mr. Winston and the Calendar Committee for what I think is going to be a calendar that's going to make a lot of people happy, and I think I would like to turn it over to you, Mr. Winston, to say a few words.
Thank you, President Lacks, and it is an exciting day here in East Brunswick. I want to thank many, many people who are involved with getting this on the agenda tonight. First and foremost, I want to thank the community, the Muslim community brought sixty-two of their members out to, the way I explained it to my wife, educate me. And took it, took it very personally, and it really gave me an opportunity to bring back to the committee your request along with others that it's just right. You know, some things that we do, it's just should be done. When you look into the mirror of East Brunswick, the reflection that comes back is many colors, many religions, many backgrounds. That is the community that I've lived in for most of my sixty years, and I see that. So I thank the Muslim community, I thank Karen Manly for taking, taking that time to piece together an enormous task. I thank East Brunswick Education Association, represented by their president Dana Zimbicki, for, for keeping an open mind and flexibility and, and understanding that, you know, in the old words of Jurassic Park, just because you could doesn't mean you should, and in this case, we absolutely should do the right thing. The committee members, not an easy one. And, and with that, the committee went the step further that, let's name these holidays what they are. There's no such holiday as spring break. That's not a real holiday. There's no such holiday as spring break or fall break number two. That's not a real holiday either. But there is, there is an Eid, I've, I got this, I've been practicing all week, Eid Alfitter, did I get it right? All right. And, and the Coptic, Coptic Christmas, a Chinese New Year, Diwali, Passover, Rosh Hashanah, which, you know, we've been granted and gifted in this town from the beginning of time. And, and it's time we share days and celebrations as much as they should. And then, lastly, the community for, for A, being who they are and their diversity, and secondly, nobody called me and said this is a bad idea, and they knew what we were doing. And again, I think, I think it took a little kick in the butt from the Muslim community to say, you know, wake up, look at the community. So with that, I am extremely proud to do something that has not been able to get accomplished in this town forever, back to my days when we had very little diversity back in the eighties and seventies, but we do today. And today, we recognize, hopefully, this board will support the efforts of what was presented by all of the stakeholders that I just mentioned, and I am thrilled to bring this to the agenda. So thank you.
And Mr. Sizmar.
Just real quick to add to Mr. Winston's. And we did not need a ten thousand five hundred dollar survey.
No.
For the board, the committee, and the township to figure out what was the right thing to do. We knew the answer to that question. So again, let's go East Brunswick.
Okay, well, then I'm happy to say that I'm going to call for a roll call on this issue, please.
Motion first, so move.
We did. Oh, did not?
We had the motion on the table.
You were just discussing.
Got it.
You're trying to trip me up.
I did, yeah.
Hey, ready for a roll call?
I am, go on.
Mrs. Becker.
This is for just the calendar.
This is for the calendar and the minutes.
Okay, calendar, yes. Minutes abstain.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Absolutely, yes.
And President Lacks.
Proud to say, yes, this is one of the really great times to have an all-agreeing board on something, so. Motion carries. Okay, may I please have, are you going to?
I'm just moving the microphone.
You're all trying to trip me up tonight, I'm telling you. Okay, may I please have a motion for Community Programs, Items One and Two. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Curriculum instruction, we have two items this evening, may please have a motion for those?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion?
Just one comment.
Mr. Winston.
I look forward to the day that we could bring all of these arts back into the schools and not, and not spend money. We, we have a lot of talent here. I really want to, we talked about this before, and I really want to continue down that path and use what we have.
Noted, Mr. Winston. We talked about this after the, the meeting we brought up, so, yeah, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have one item on facilities this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Any discussion on facilities? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have eleven items this evening, may please have a motion for all eleven items on financial services.
So moved.
Moved by, oh, Mr. Winston and Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion on financial services? No, will the secretary please call the roll then?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yep.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for Human Resources? We have a personnel agenda, addendum, you'll notice as well, for our human resources this evening. Moved by Mrs. Becker and second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yep.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. And we have four items this evening on Student Services, may I please have a motion for Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, this is roll call? I'm so sorry, oh, that's right, I apologize. Will the secretary please call the roll on that?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to new and or old business, our committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board, as she's waving at me. Before I turn it over to Mrs. Becker, I just want to say I apologize, I was a little heated earlier, but I'm, I'm happy to say that there's a lot of good things that go on in this community and certainly in this school district, as you've all seen tonight. And truly, East Brunswick is a community that respects each other, and it's a proud moment. So I just wanted to, to say I started a little unhappy, I'm ending very happy, and I'm going to let my friend who's waving at me.
I feel like that kid in school, ooh, ooh, ooh.
Mr. Kada, Mr. Kada.
So I want to give a committee report about the first committee meeting of the Aha committee to explore recommendations for a new high school.
Did you say hamhock?
Ad-hoc. I had to leave the last meeting early, which is why I did not give the report, and I apologize for that. But we had a committee meeting on January thirty-first. Have I mentioned in the last five minutes that I'm on the board almost twenty-three years? So.
Mentioned it tonight.
I'm also the only sitting board member who has been through successful referendums on five buildings in this district. So I think I'm. I'm sorry?
I had one.
One. I think I was a pretty good choice for chair of this committee. And I thank you so much, Lori, for appointing me chair of this committee. We had an awesome committee meeting. It was so good. The best part about it is we had people from all over the township. We had people with young children, we had people with old children, we had people who didn't have children yet, we had seniors, we had people who owned businesses in town, we have single people, we have current administrators, former administrators, current staff, former staff, we had recent empty nesters, we had township officials representing the council, the mayor's office, the park and rec, and it was great. So picture this, instead of having rows of people set up like there is now, what I'm going to call audience or stadium seating facing a particular space, we set it up that everybody was sitting at tables at workstations. So after a few brief, but very well-done presentations by Dr. Valeski and Dr. Vanilla, we broke out into the groups that people happened to be sitting at. People had an opportunity to work with people that they had never met before in their life. And the great thing about it was, everything had, everyone there had a few things in common. We all live in East Brunswick, we all care passionately about this town, we all care passionately about our students and staff, and we're very enthusiastic about recommendations for a new high school. The rest of the meeting was spent as a breakout workout session for each group. We tasked them with addressing specific topics, but we gave them the opportunity to share initiatives and brainstorm and talk about wish lists and, and what would be possible and, and wouldn't this be great? And it was an opportunity to start a dialogue that's going to become a formal recommendation to the Board of Ed before the end of the school year on what this township would like to see a new high school look like inside and out. What we did is we, with Jana and Karen's amazing help, of course, were taking all of the initiatives, ideas, and suggestions that were collected from the last meeting and putting them together, and we're going to use that to propel the agenda for each successive meeting. Our next meeting is next week, for instance. So we're going to take everything we already started with, we're going to build on it, we're going to tweak it, we're going to add to it, we're going to delete some things, we're going to layer it so that we come up with a very clear set of initiatives to bring to this board, representing all the facets of the community. We also plan on having several breakout sessions with current students. And we're even thinking about bringing back some former students who could tell us as they went through college and out into the working world what they realized in hindsight they would have liked to have had in the high school. We're talking about perhaps some breakout sessions with staff alone, but the important thing is this Aha committee. I wish everyone could have been there. It was one of the best committee meetings I've sat through in twenty-three years. People were there ages mid-twenty's to mid-seventy's, maybe even mid-eighty's. Not me.
You're just mid-seventy's?
Just kidding. So I want to thank everyone, and I know that we're going to be rotating board members in for the rest of the meeting so that they can have the opportunity to experience this. And I'm, I'm, I'm very, very optimistic and enthusiastic about what we're going to bring to this board before the end of the school year. So thanks to everyone who participated.
It was a great meeting and truly appreciate your leadership on that. And it's going to be her birthday in two days, and she is nowhere near her seventy's. I'll just say that for the record, so. Mr. Hong and Mr. Corangelo?
All right, so thank you, Ms. Becker, that was fantastic. I'm so excited, you know? I can't wait for my turn.
Good, you should be.[1760.34] Good, you should be.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, we need it too, you know, we need leadership from you.
We're psyched to have you.
Yes, thank you. So, we have a Community Programs Committee, and it was my first time, you know, being the chair of that, and, you know, Anne-Marie did a great job, you know, rolling through it, and some of these other board members, a great job bringing stuff there. But, I just want to mention a couple of dates, the morning aftercare, the registration's May 1st, and something I took away from this meeting was that the, the high school kids are teaching the younger kids chess. And I thought, that, that stood, stood out for me, because I thought that was awesome, how we can integrate the, you know, older kids and the younger kids, and have the older kids teach the younger kids, and I do that in my school, where, you know, someone with more advanced techniques will teach the other people, and then we would roll through that, so that was really good. Some of the other programs that we have are forensics, I know Anne-Marie made the speech the other day, forensics, we have adult sewing, which I could probably use, if you look at my clothes. Drone class, so we could spy on the new high school, things like that, so, I, I did, yeah, I'm going to move today. I guess moving me in helped. So, what I want to discuss too is, I want to, I had an idea, and it came from one of my teachers, where her son is, you know, driving in, you know, high school right now, and, you know, during class, she gets a phone call for, from him, and he got a flat tire on the road somewhere over here. He didn't know what to do. So, I started thinking, I think, I said, well, how can, you know, I help that? So, I want to come up with a little type of either class or some initiative to where we can, you know, assist these kids on driving. So, my vision was, just, this is how I will think about it, and we can roll it through, is, we just have them, you know, with their cars in a parking lot with their parents, and we give them a flyer or a folder, and say, "This is what you do when you get pulled over, this is what you do when you have a flat tire," and like some, you know, some numbers and some, things like that, you know, "Here's your blinkers, here's your oil," here, because you don't really get much of that, and my daughter's 16, so she's going through that, and I'm showing her that, but she could always use, "How do I change a flat tire?" and things like that. So, I thought it might be a good, you know, way that we can integrate kids that are driving because they're nervous, they don't know what to do, and they panic, you know, you get pulled over, or they hit a curb, flat tires. So, I wanted to throw out a motion to have a, you know, exploratory type of class, no? What do I do then?
I think what, what I would do is, you, you wouldn't be in motion having exploratory classes, I think what you'd want to do is, you just raise this, you probably want Dr. Valeski to look into it, and then report back to the board.
Okay, so, report back to the board.
The feasibility of doing that.
Yeah, yeah, the feasibility of doing that, and having maybe someone from transportation, like, you know, mechanic, roll through, how do you open up your hood, and just have all the students have their cars out, and one by one, you go and help them navigate their car.
You're suggesting this would be like a volunteer, the kids aren't required, this isn't required.
Absolutely not, you can just sign up for this, and, you know, they get their license, they can go, you know, sign up.
So, give Dr. V. time to think about what this could look like, Mark?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, he'll present it to us, and then.
Sure.
Part of enrichment, right? Part of some type of enrichment offering?
For community programs?
Yeah, community programs.
What my daughter does is, when she has a flat tire, she calls me no matter where I am.
Well, you know, that's why I'm orphaned this up, because I don't want that to happen to me.
Hey, buy your kids AAA cards, invest in AAA cards.
Yeah, but, it is a good idea to know.
You know, have like a pamphlet.
Because if you get a flat tire on the turnpike, the Parkway, 195.
No, yeah, you can't bring.
You can't call roadside assistance.
Yeah, yeah.
They won't come out, those are all.
So, that's something these kids need to know as well, so all these little tidbits, you roll it through and just have it in a parking lot, or whatever.
I'm going to take your class now, because I just learned something. So, thank you.
So, something like that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's talk.
Yeah. Any, Mr. Hong?
Yeah, I had multiple meetings since last board meeting, I only emphasize one yesterday. Last night, we had East Brunswick Education Foundation trustee meeting, so, EBEF is going to have the annual pie dinner on April 19th. Among this year's honorees, we have our own George Bowley, who is the honoree. So, EBEF is asking for help, so if possible, please talk to your friend, talk to the business owner, it doesn't matter if it's in East Brunswick or out of East Brunswick, please have them show their advertisement, show their support, either putting an ad out, or buy somebody buy the ticket, just, it's not helping EBEF, it's helping our children. So, please, don't want to be okay. So, we are still trying to get more ad out to fill the, the journal, and we try to get more people to buy the ticket, so please help. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Mr. Sizmar.
Real quick, yeah, when I was in high school, I think it was Mr. Chinney's class, they taught you how to balance a checkbook, change a tire, check the oil, so, it's been done before in East Brunswick, it's a great idea. On, on just a reassurance note, Mayor Cohen is not the security expert in this district. I'm going to paraphrase, but he made a statement in his township address, where he said, "If there's a community center on Board of Education or high school property," he doesn't buy any of the security issues that were brought up. And it's paraphrased, but that's basically, he said, "He does not buy it." Well, guess what? Mr. Natalicio is our security director. I head our security committee. Our experience, I am sure, in that field far outweighs what Mayor Cohen would say. To be that dismissive of any security concerns that come up, that is not the policy of this district. We take security seriously, we listen to everyone, parents, students, everyone involved, if someone thinks there might be a security concern. To be dismissive of that makes me angry. So, you, you need not apologize for what you said before, because you were spot on. Now, in a better, better thing, because it was a great meeting tonight, there was some criticism that was thrown at the administration. I think we've heard one voice of how we feel tonight, but, if I may, I would like to make a motion that we support Dr. Valeski, Mr. Juliana, and the entire administration in the job they are doing, and to compliment them for what they do for this district. So, my motion is more or less symbolic, but it's, I wanted to.
Make a motion and take a vote from the board that we support these.
Okay. Mr. Sizmar made a motion, Mr. Winston just seconded it. Is there any other discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Absolutely. Thank you for the time.
All right, motion, motion passes. We absolutely support you. Mr. Winston, you have something?
I have two, two things. Ms. Megan here did not mention one particular thing that had occurred at the school, and I want to mention that the orchestra, the Carnegie, do you remember now? Yeah, there she goes. The Carnegie Hall-bound Orchestra did a production called Vivaldi Ring of Mystery. It was ridiculously great. I, I don't know if anybody, is there a video of it?
Yeah, there's a video.
Dr. O'Paul put together, essentially what it was, was Vivaldi music narrated by a teacher, I guess, Jack Cibrian, is that right? And student Alexandria Corallo, they both sang operatic, told the story, some fictional story about Vivaldi, highlighted with music about some broken violin. I kind of lost track, but, but it was, you know, so, I was like, all right, I hope they get it fixed, but it was, I was like, wow, it was just, it was a really, really great. So, I want to acknowledge, I mean, just what we do, I mean, why this district is great, and it's things like that, and, and in response to the mayor, I do want to talk a little bit about, I have three pages of notes, and I'm not going to do that to anybody, it was more therapeutic for me to write it out, instead of punching a wall, because of what he, of some of the things that he said. But I will say that this Vivaldi thing is, speaks to something that the mayor had said, which is so, he did say something that was profoundly correct, that people come to this district for the schools. I have always believed that. My parents believed that when I was the first set of students to enter Warnstoffer back in 1960, whatever, so, and.
Why are you looking at me?
No, 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 I know, we always talk about age, so I think I'm number two out here, but anyway. So, so that's why people come to the district, so you can't value that statement, build 1,784 units, and turn to us and say, "We're not doing a good job." You can't have it both ways. The reason why those 1,800 or so units are going to fill up is because of the work of the nine members, the administrators, the teachers, and everybody else in this district that makes these wheels go. What is broken that this man needs to fix? And if it needs fixing that bad, you shouldn't have built all those buildings, okay? It doesn't make sense, it doesn't logically add up. I'm very disappointed. I've known the mayor for a long time personally, and I am just absolutely appalled at the nonsense that came from that. We're going to fill those, those rooms for him, you're going to fill those rooms for him, that's why these people are going to come, and I don't know what the number is, .2, .9, 300 per year, I don't care, they're coming for the schools. Interestingly enough, he talked about a partnership, he said he wanted to be a partner with this board, a partner with this board. And now, I'm married, if I said to my wife, "I like our partnership, and because of that, I will now tell you what you're going to do," I don't think that would go very well. That's not a good partnership. I think I would be very sad right now if I were to take that approach with my lovely, what's that?
You need student services.
Student service, I would, I would need a medic, that's what I would need after that, it, it would not work. So, so you can't say you want a partnership, and then say, "I'm going to tell you what you're going to do." That's not a partnership, that's a dictatorship. Let's see, more, I'm going on, so, population growth, you know, population growth, we talked about, all of the redevelopment, apartments, townhouses, yep, he's right. It is, it is something to, to take notice of, and sure, Mark's, Mr. Sizmar's numbers, my numbers, the, Mr.
Whatever.
Dr. Gripp's numbers, maybe true, ultimately, if, if Dr. Gripp's numbers are right, 430 students is an elementary school. What's the number of kids at Warnstoffer? Give me a number.
Right around that number.
Right around that number. So, there's an elementary school, and that's infrastructure, but, one needs to stay in his lane. There's other infrastructure problems in this town as a result of that, all of which fall within the mayor's purview, all of which, just like us, the citizens elected him to do. Nobody elected the mayor of East Brunswick to run this board, they elected the nine individuals that sit up here to, to make sure the district runs well, while we count on the likes of, of Bernie and Victor, as we call them, to make sure that, for them to run this thing. Nobody asked him to do it. I understand that his goal is to come in here, fix it, and listen, if it's broken, like I said, you shouldn't have built. The mayor mentioned the security issue, Mr. Sizmar did say that, and, and lastly, or just in closing, although there is more, I will say that feelings aren't facts, all right? And what he did, and he pounded the podium, and his feelings came out, these are not facts. The fact of the matter is, we have one of the best-run districts in the state, we're constantly recognized for it, we spend our money wisely, and if he had a question on things like, "Where's the 12 million?", I don't think Mr. Juliana would say, "I'm not telling you." I, I, I don't, I can't imagine that would ever come out of your mouth. You will give him the answer, he may not like it, but he doesn't have to, all right? The voters will decide whether we get to keep these seats in one, two, and three years when these come up. I am tired of the pressure and the bullying that came down from that office toward these hard-working members. I have so much more, I'd be welcome to tell anybody, but I will say, I think what was said was nonsense, I think he owes this board an apology, and I think it was disrespectful on every, every single level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston.
I banged it, see?
You banged, yeah, yeah. Mrs. Becker.
Well said, Mr. Winston. And I'm going to echo something that Mr. Winston said to you, Lori, you have nothing to apologize for. I'm glad you brought up the word fact. The only thing I want to point out is a fact. To the best of my recollection, and since I don't trust my own memory, I have gone back over minutes and watching board meetings, we have never made the statement that we are at or over total capacity. What we have talked about was that our elementary schools were maxed out, in terms of every classroom in the elementary schools were being used, and we needed more classrooms. We didn't want to build onto every elementary school, so Dr. Valeski, and Dr. Bowley, and, and all the other doctors, but his central office staff came up with this great plan for grade reconfiguration, so that by moving the fifth grade out of the elementary schools, we would open up all these classrooms to accommodate our packed elementary schools. Now, of course, that triggered a domino effect, you move it to fifth, now it's fifth and sixth, then you have seventh grade going up to Churchill, you got the TCU's in, like Dr. V. said, the clock's ticking, we got to come up with a permanent solution. So, there was a domino effect, but we never, ever said that we were passing or at total district capacity. We said, "We've reached our max at the elementary schools, we have no classrooms free," because as Mr. Sizmar pointed out very well, not all our classrooms are used for your regular, mainstream, 18 to 22 kids, or sometimes 25 kid classrooms. Sometimes a classroom has to contain only 10 children, but we still have to have it, it's valid. So, I just wanted to go on record as saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Mr. Corangelo, join the party.
Yeah, so, thank you guys for sticking up for each other, because how many times have you go back on the video and say, hearing me say over there, that we are a good board, and we, you know, do stick up for each other, and we are not fractured, you know, we're doing good together, we don't always agree, but that's the point of it, we're different people, so, I'd like to just say that we are a unit that works very well together, and, you know, doesn't matter what other people say.
Two thumbs up.
You know what I'm saying? Because I've said, I'm proud to be on this board, I've been here two, three years now, very happy to be here, I'm learning a lot, I always tell you how much I'm learning from you.
Just two.
You, two and a half or so, whatever, I finally got a, you know, pretty good, yeah, oh, stop it, this is 23. But anyway, so, we are fractured, we're doing great, as you saw, I hope everyone in town,